Good evening and welcome to the October 8, 2019, meeting of the Milton Select Board. Before we begin, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Before we begin, a mea culpa. We have on our calendar meetings of this board the second and fourth Wednesdays of the month. We've had that for about a year and a half. Two weeks ago when we met, we were aware that Yom Kippur, the Yom Kippur holiday is celebrated on Wednesday, October 9. So, we did our best to reschedule it so we wouldn't conflict with that holiday. However, what we all did was to fail to take account for the fact that Yom Kippur begins at sundown tonight and ends at sundown tomorrow night. And so, it would have been better for us to keep our meeting on Wednesday rather than move it and to try to accommodate the holiday. When I spoke to Rabbi Benjamin of the local temple this weekend and told him about our error, he was very kind and he said, "Well, this is the season of forgiveness. And so, if you discuss your mistake and ask for forgiveness, I'm sure that all of those who celebrate it will be willing to grant it." So, our apologies. Individually and collectively, we failed to do what we're trying to do and we hope that in the season of forgiveness, all those that celebrate will forgive us. Next time, we will make sure to get it right. Moving on, I see the clerk here. So, without objection, I'd like to move Item 3, which is the executive session with respect to the town administrator's contract. I'd like to move that before Item 18 because that may work better, given people who are here to present. And if there's no objection to that, we'll move right to Item -- Mr. Wells?
No, I'm good.
If there's no objection, we'll move to Item 4, which is citizen speak. Is there anyone here for citizen speak? Seeing none. Moving on to Item 5, it's the report of the town clerk. Ms. Galvin, whenever you're ready.
Good evening.
Hello.
Hi, how are you? Thanks for having me. I really appreciate being invited. So, when Mr. Dennehy mentioned to me about coming and speaking with you folks, I thought I would talk about what's coming up in the upcoming 2020 year. It's going to be a busy year in terms of elections. Federal census will also be happening. So, in terms of elections, we have four. So, we will have the March primary on March 3. Then, that's the presidential primary. Oh, I'm out of breath. It was a long walk. Then, we have the annual town election in April. Then, in September, it will be September 15th this year, we'll have the state primary. And then, in November, we will have the presidential election. Historically, the primary, presidential primary and presidential election, huge volume turnouts, so that's always exciting. And town election, not so much. We also will -- the US Census will start in 2020, so that is a mandate every 10 years that the entire country undergoes and they count every person who resides in the 50 states. It's a year-long process that they undertake. They expect by April of 2020, every household will have gotten their census. This year, for the first time, you'll be able to answer it online as well as either over the phone or through the mail. And I want to thank Alan Bishop, who has been extremely helpful in helping me collect the data of all the new residences, making sure that our street listings are correct so that we can count all of Milton's residences. So, he has been extremely helpful in doing that.
Clerk, if I may, when was the last census taken?
2010. And then, typically, the results of that, if the town is going to have to redistrict at all, would fall out two years afterwards. So, we'd be looking in 2022. If, in fact, we have to redistrict, that's when it would occur.
The reason I ask is a lot of the algorithms that some of the federal and state money come from is reliant on your census material?
Correct.
Right. So, updating that number may also, in fact, benefit the town from a grant or a state or local aid percentage. So, it's pretty important.
Correct. And based on our annual census, we have about, pretty close to 27,000 residents and the federal as of 2010 was 2703. So, we're still right on par, but not everybody completes their annual census, so my statistics might be a little bit less accurate.
Mr. Wells?
Do you expect that they may go up? I know that in 2010, and I believe the same now, residential college students count on our -- am I right?
Correct, they do. So, it's where you're actually living.
Living.
It's not where you're registered to vote or where your primary residence is. It is where you are currently at that time. So, it very well could. I don't think it's going to be a dramatic number, but I do anticipate that it will go up a little bit. And then, the redistricting really is a fall-down effect from the senatorial and then it goes to our state senate, state reps. So, that's where that redistricting may or may not occur.
And just to follow up, Ms. Galvin, on Richard's question, do we rely on the college students to return those forms or is there some other way we get the numbers?
So, because they're in a group housing setting, we rely on the college itself.
Oh, good. Well, I'm sure they would do it fine, but --
Right.
Okay. Any -- I shouldn't say that, but any other questions, comments? Ms. Conlon?
Susan, thanks for coming in tonight. One question is, I know four years ago with the early voting before the presidential primary, you asked that we defer the special time meeting from October to later on in the year. I'm expecting you'll probably ask for that again for the October 2020 town meeting, but for us, for planning purposes and for planning board and others, it would be good to know if you're expecting to submit that request.
Yes, I am going to submit that, yes.
So, as we're thinking ahead to articles?
Probably in January that I would submit it so that you'd have enough time, but if you want it after this meeting, I could submit it sooner.
At least just getting a sense helps us plan, so thank you.
And I very much appreciate your leeway in allowing that because it is extremely helpful.
That was a busy time, I remember.
Yes, yes.
And then, since we have a lot of residents who watch this show and although you're an elected official, you're not on TV in front of them all the time, there's a lot of exciting things that your office is doing and the one in particular is the records restoration and preserving the older records. Could you maybe talk a little bit about that, let people know what you're doing and what you've been doing for the last few years on that?
Sure. So far, we've done about, restored about 35 records and our records date back into the 1600s. And the order in which we've done them is we've looked at the condition of the records. Those that were in serious disrepair, we tackled first. I feel comfortable in saying that all of those, at this point, have been done. We are still continuing, but the serious ones are in good shape. I just had the gentleman come in last week and he took about 15 more books that he's going to restore. And so, I think that will be the stop for a period of time and we'll look to that in the future to see how we look further down the line.
That's great, thank you.
Can I just go back to voting for one second? I'm intrigued by voting.
Me too.
When I started in town government in Milton, there was a very big turnout during the early election that took place at Town Hall.
Yes.
And it was quite a burden for you and you made quite an accommodation for those folks. Roughly what percentage during that 2016 federal election came out early and what type of turnout did you see?
It felt like a lot more of a percentage than it actually was, but it was roughly about, and I beg your forgiveness if I'm not completely accurate, it was roughly about 20% that came early. And it was a little bit higher because we did offer it back in 2018, too. It was our second go-around and that was for the state election. And it was roughly about, I want to say like 31%. I think the word is out more now. I anticipate it being even greater. It is a wonderful opportunity for voters. There is legislation, it hasn't passed yet, but I anticipate it happening, that we will have legislation to accommodate early voting for the presidential primary. Secretary Galvin has asked for that. It has been sponsored, it is under talks. So, any day now, I'm expecting that that -- that's going to be a little bit different. It won't be the 10 days, it'll be five days, but still, it will give voters the opportunity to vote early.
Other questions, comments? Sue, a few years ago, there was discussion about automating the records in your office and I don't remember whether that was completed or whether we had the funding for it.
So, some of our records have been automated. Something that you folks would be very familiar with is boards and committees. So, we have automated that. It's still a work in progress, but we hope to, by the end of this year, have the ability to notify people on a monthly basis as to who hasn't completed their obligation and streamline that process. So, that will be a huge benefit to you folks, our office and, you know, those that are serving on a board committee.
Mr. Chair, if I may, one more? So, there's so much stuff that goes on in the clerk's office. She's being very modest and humble here tonight.
She always is.
I mean, there's weddings, there's dog licenses, there's, you name it, goes on in that office.
It's fun.
She's very humble here tonight, but it is the busiest office in Town Hall. I think it would help if you could kind of elaborate, like what your office does on a day-to-day basis. People walk through that door looking for several things.
So, yeah, we do all births, deaths and marriages. Deaths has been particularly interesting since we've had the addition of seasoned hospice. So, since they've come onboard, we've almost doubled the amount of death certificates that we process. In addition to that, because there's so many in the different funeral homes that come into our office because of them being out of town, deaths. So, we're very busy with funeral directors coming in, purchasing death certificates and, as a matter of fact, I had somebody today that, you know, they would like us to stop everything and process it. And we would love to have that ability to be able to do that, but there's a lot of tasks that we do have on hand, so we can only offer it during certain time periods that will process them if they're in our queue during that time. After that, you know, we would have to wait till the next day. Unfortunately, we don't have the luxury of on the spot. Most cases, we do and we certainly will try, but sometimes we aren't able to do that. Another big thing that we've been doing is, and that, too, is automated, is the public records. We've had quite a surge in public records. You know what, I shouldn't say we've had quite a surge because prior to the enactment of the law, each department was keeping track of their own. So, now, we have the ability to track how many are coming in. I think all of the town departments have worked really very hard to make sure that they are uploading the requests when they come in so that we can have an accurate record and that we have the documentation so that if somebody else is seeking those records, that we don't have to continually stop and go back and forth and look for that. So, there has been a lot of that. Just between last year and this year, we are, for the full year of last year, I think we had, just on the town side, somewhere around 145, we have already surpassed that. We're at like 180, 170 something. So, and we still have a few more months to go.
Just to follow on what Mr. Dennehy said, you have a very dedicated, hard-working staff of three, correct?
Yes, four including myself, yeah.
Four including yourself. So, you may want to mention?
Oh, yes, they are the heart and soul and, you know, everybody that comes in is greeted with a wonderful reception of dedicated employees. You know, I am very, very fortunate to have Gail, Rena and Barbara. Couldn't do it without them.
They even supply dog treats for the license.
They do, they do. Yep, and candy for the kids. But is there any other questions?
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Sue.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate it.
We've worked long enough today.
Yeah.
Thank you, clerk.
Thank you.
All right, Item 6, approval of traffic commission recommendations. I think we have the chair of the traffic commission, Mr. Berkeley, here. We'll turn it over to him.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for having me. So, the traffic commission met last Wednesday, October 2, and we have two amendments to the traffic rules and orders to present to you. First one is 25 Bassett Street, which is a request brought by residents of that neighborhood. So, essentially, there are two parking spots at that address that encroach on the travel lane for the road. So, anyone that's driven down Bassett Street, so if you're coming from Bruegers towards the neighborhood, those last two spots, if there's a vehicle there, it's in the way and you have to actually cross the double yellow line to get by them. So, we recommend it in favor of removing two of the three parking spots in front of that residence. And the second one is similar in nature, Adams Street at Warf Street, there are two parking spots between Warf Street and the driveway for the -- There are two parking spots between Warf Street and the driveway for number ninety-eight Adams Street that, when a vehicle is parked there, block the sight distance from any vehicle exiting Warf Street. So if you were to exit Warf Street onto Adams and look left, if vehicles are parked there, you can't see vehicles coming down the hill of Adams Street approaching you. So that's just to improve that sight distance. And it turns out, after we researched those parking spots, it's actually a bus stop for the number two-seventeen route. So we've contacted the T about formalizing that a little better and striping that, so it's an official bus stop. Right now, the way it's laid out, the bus stop is in the driveway, which isn't ideal, obviously, so. So those are the two recommendations from our meeting, and happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, I think that the second, the Adams Street, I think that's something we heard in traffic mitigation at some of our public hearings.
Oh, yeah, that's a big topic for the area war folks, yeah.
Right, right. They thoroughly appreciated the "don't block the box" being put in, but you still, that line of sight as cars come down northbound on Adams Street is pretty dangerous.
So just a quick question. Having sat in your chair for a couple of years, I'm always looking at, so I see Boston in, where they've done it, they put these white poles at all, you're thinking of doing something like that there, or you just want to take out those spaces?
Yeah, so we'll have to, I think in the case of Adams at Warf, if we make it a bus stop, it'll be obvious that there's no parking there. On Bassett Street, we'll have to look at creative ways, because people are obviously used to parking there, and, you know, striping is good, but it goes away in snowstorms and, you know, when there's debris on the street. So we may look at more of a physical barrier that is also, you know, manageable during the plowing seasons and those type of...
Yeah, I see Boston put them up, and then you can just lift them up during the plowing season.
Right, so they are removable, yeah.
Just one last, first, I'll make a motion to approve the following recommendations from the Traffic Commission, amendments to the traffic rules and orders. Article five, section two, 25 Bassett Street, remove the two easternmost parking spots due to conflict with travel lane width. Number two, article five, section two, Adams Street and Warf Street, remove two parking spots on the even side of the street between Warf Street and the driveway entrance for ninety-eight Adams Street due to sight distance impairment and bus stop.
Motion's been made in second, and further discussion, Mr. Wells? Oh, we're all set.
No, I just want to add one thing when we're done, I'm ready to...
Oh, okay. Any further discussion, comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Mr. Wells?
Just one final, I mentioned this to you the other day, and I went and looked at it twice. When you travel down Warf, at Warf, where it comes into, we go to enter eighty-eight Warf, I believe that was a four-way, at least a three-way, coming out of Yacht Club, coming out eighty-eight, and then coming out. I think the one coming out was knocked down, I think it needs to go back, it's gone.
The stop sign.
Yeah, I think it got knocked out. You may have already got to it, but just remember that one, because I know that resident's going to ask me again.
And if, Mr. Chair, if I just could, totally unrelated to Traffic Commission, on the DPW side, I just wanted to wish Bobby Leonard a happy retirement. He retired with the town recently after a thirty-plus-year career, and everyone is very happy for him, and sorry to see him go, but happy that he went to a better place, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, thanks for having us, Jason, take care.
So I see Mr. Androsino here, and so what I'd like to do, if it makes sense for Mr. Androsino and Ms. Martin, to move up the discussion of the, let's see, where is it? Item eleven A, discussion of the recommendations from the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee. I'll move that up and do it now, so you don't have to wait, if that makes sense. So we'll move that up, we'll pick up with item seven after, so we're going to go right to item eleven A, discussion of the recommendations. And we have...
Hello, stranger. Welcome back. Want to stay?
We have a list of thirteen recommendations that the Chair, Mr. Schmidt, presented two weeks ago, I think it was, September eleventh?
September eleventh, I think, at that meeting.
Oh, okay, so it was two weeks.
Or the twelfth.
That's right.
The report was dated the eleventh.
Right, so it was September eleventh, so it was just about a month ago, so...
I was not intending to go over all thirteen of them here.
You don't have to.
Okay. But just to hit some of them happily, actually, before I talk about, well, first, Mike Androsino, Vice Chair of the Airplane Noise Advisory Commission.
And I'm Barbara Martin, the Secretary for the ANAC.
At, a few of the recommendations that we had have, I'm glad to say, even in the last month, since Chairman of our committee, Andy Schmidt, presented them, seem to be moving in a favorable direction. It looks like, so for example, I think on our list, if number five was invite Professor Hansman of the MIT study to come, get out of his lab and come see where the planes actually go and where they put the landing gear down. We've gotten word that that's going to happen, and I think, you know, that is one of the things that all of us in town have been advocating for as kind of necessary to really understand what the issues are here, so that would be good. Another one on the list was to reach out to Community Noise Lab, which is part of the noise monitoring group within the BU School of Public Health, and to have them, you know, be more involved with Milton or see Milton as an area they could study. And it seems like, you know, we're hopeful that that's moving in a good direction. A few of, so I'll just hit on a few of the other items that I think would be priorities for our committee and should be priorities for the Select Board in addressing this issue in the town. Some of them are technical, some of them are more touchy-feely. Starting with a technical one, item three on our list was move to prevent or delay a wake cat from occurring at Logan. Wake cat is a plain speak abbreviation for wake turbulence re-categorization, which means essentially that the FAA has determined that they're so good at flying the planes in very narrow corridors, thanks to the next-gen system, that they can actually fly more of them and have them be closer together than they've, than their, you know, sort of experience and models have shown. So in a number of airports around the country, Atlanta, Houston, Memphis, I think because of FedEx, they have done what's called a wake cat, where they, the FAA goes in and says, you know, we think if the planes follow the next-gen protocols, we can fly even more of them on the narrow corridor, closer together than they already have, which I think would be unbelievable for anyone who lives under the planes we have. I think it should be a priority for our committee and for the town to be active in trying to advocate to make sure this doesn't happen. And this is not an issue where Milton should be alone, there should be other, you know, other towns and affected communities that we could be with on this.
So Mike, I'll just interject, to that point, I know that our MCAC rep, Ms. Doherty, raised that with the Executive Committee of the MCAC, I think at the, not the meeting today, but the prior meeting.
Yep.
And they have requested that Massport, that provide its plans and study the impacts of any kind of wake recat. And so he's moving it through MCAC, and I think he's had support for that through the MCAC. Doesn't mean we shouldn't do things as well, but hopefully, we're going to get some action on that from the MCAC.
Yeah, that's good to see. Another item, less technical, more in the information-sharing view, was that we've been talking in our committee about the need to hold a Town Hall meeting to update people on what's happening on airplane noise and health issues and what they can do about it. We had, at our last ANAC meeting, we had felt, was it Bob Halloran was his name, a very impassioned citizen speaker, who was fairly new to the town, and, you know, because of that, had a great perspective on, you know, the concerns that he's seeing and, you know, frankly, a concern that he's not sure that enough's being done to address the issue here in the town. And so he said that, you know, I think correctly, if we have a town, kind of a town information meeting on this, we should expect a lot of pushback about, you know, what's wrong and what are we, what are we going to do about it? But I don't think that should dissuade us from having it. And I know we've kicked around some dates, November fourteenth was one of the dates that we've talked about, and I'm not sure whether we're...
Andy had emailed me today to ask if that was the date, to confirm it. So with the acceptance or in conjunction with the Select Board, that would be a great day. It's a Thursday in November, so we're hoping that it would be a meeting both of the ANAC and the Select Board in conjunction with one another to present information that people may not be aware of. And that was Mr. Halloran's concern, was that there isn't a central forum with which to access information as to what's taking place or information that's available to residents of the town.
So we haven't had, so this is the first time since the last ANAC meeting that this Board has had a chance to hear that and to discuss that. So the date that the ANAC came up with was the fourteenth. So if everyone on this Board, I know ANAC wants to get this Board's input as well, so if everyone on this Board generally agrees with that, we'll go ahead and start with it. Unless there's any, unless there's any...
November fourteenth?
Yeah, November fourteenth.
We don't meet on the thirteenth, right? We meet the sixth or the twentieth, I think?
Yes, I believe that's right. Sixth and the, yeah?
Because of Halloween, I mean, because of Thanksgiving. Thanksgiving would be the twenty-seventh, so if you go second and fourth, you're meeting the Wednesday before Thanksgiving.
Okay.
So if you go sixth and twentieth, then fourteenth would work for the joint meeting.
Okay, that'll work. Good.
Ms. Conlon, it's Tony?
That's great.
Good, perfect. All right, so, and so I think we want to try to get the Council on Aging. Mike, if you could, if you could make sure we can get that.
Would be big enough for this, do you think it'll be big enough?
Aye. Yeah, I would hope so.
All right. It was here the last time.
It was.
Okay.
And so we'll have...
Seven PM?
Seven PM?
I would guess that would be a good time, in order for people to get home from work and if they want to participate, yes.
And then we'll start to publicize it. I know there was some talk at the ANAC meeting last week about making sure we have plenty of time to publicize it, so people know about...
And we have another meeting this Tuesday, the fifteenth.
Right, right.
Yeah, so, okay, that'll be good, we'll, we can get started.
Yeah.
We had, at our last meeting, we have a pretty good agenda for it, I think, already in process, so it's good to have the logistics worked out. Another item, third of five, that I might bring up would be for the Select Board to, or to authorize the ANAC to reach out to the school committee and kind of raise the issues with them over airplane noise and pollution. Not in a way of alarming people, but we think it's not just a, it's airplane noise, we know it's not just a convenience issue, it's a public health issue, and it's something that affects schoolchildren in Milton, we would like the school committee to be aware.
Would like them to partner with us to put forth the issue and make them a partner in the conversation, is the best way of saying it.
So here's a couple of suggestions. I mean, it seems to me, maybe if some members of ANAC get on the agenda for a school committee meeting, or we invite the school committee or some subset of the school committee to an ANAC meeting. Seems to me that might be a way to engage there. Maybe better to have ANAC come into a school committee meeting.
Well, we wanted your blessing to go forward with that idea, so.
Yeah, you certainly don't need our blessing, but I...
I don't think you need that, I mean, yeah, you're our committee, I mean, you know way, at least, you know way more about this than I do.
Yeah, I think it makes good sense, I mean, does anyone disagree?
I think it's a wonderful suggestion.
Yeah, the only comment, I guess I would make on that is, I think they're all pretty aware of the issue, because we've, you know, they get copied on all of our letters, and I know that we've had conversations with the school committee, and Mike was the Chair of the school committee, and there was some meetings or discussion with the school committee at that time. So I think they're aware of it, but it doesn't hurt to keep the issue in front of them and keep it alive, and maybe even inviting them to the November fourteenth meeting, whether they attend as a board or just some of their individual members attend, I think would be a good idea.
Good idea.
Okay.
Yeah, certainly, when I was, when I was on the school committee, there was, there was a lot of, a lot of back and forth on this, you know, to the extent that we went into Massport to talk about the impact on the schools and the playgrounds, and so I suspect they know about it, but I think it's, I think it's, makes really good sense to make sure that that's firmed up even more, so.
Mr. Chair, is there anybody else, just in that light, is there anyone else from town government or from any of our partners in the community here who should be present? I mean, it is, it's truly an issue that affects every single person who lives here. Actually, people who live here go to school, there's a lot of, a lot of i's, you can dot and t's, you can cross here that are affected by this. Just drawing it out there, you don't have to...
Okay, yeah. Good, thanks, Richard. Fourth of the five items we wanted to mention was, the item twelve on our list was establish working rules for oversight of the MCAC representative. We already talked about some of the good things that he's been getting done, and for communicating the town's position through the representative. Our committee feels it's important that the town has one voice on the airplane noise issues. That voice is the Select Boards, and ANAC and the MCAC rep all have to work together, I think, to support and advise the Select Board and bring information to you, and then communicate out through whatever channels we do, whatever the town's position is. So I think that our committee thinks it's important that there be communication, kind of always through this triad of airplane advocacy that we have, that being the Select Board, ANAC, and the MCAC rep. If you want to make it a four-wheel vehicle rather than a tricycle, you could add in the various grassroots efforts within the town, but those, you know, kind of, because of the structure of our committee, we really can't interact with that too much. So I think the committee feels that the Select Board needs to be in charge of what our, what our position is here in the town. Lastly, item thirteen on our list, this is a little bit of a flyer, and I fear that budget realities might impair it, but this was really Barbara's, the genesis of the idea came from Barbara, and it was to create an airplane advocate within the town. We envision it really being a paid position, just as we would not trust a citizen, a bunch of uncoordinated volunteer activists to spearhead the town's response to police matters or fire matters. The town sits next to an airport, and we're always going to have an airplane problem here, and we think that if the town had a professional who was spearheading all of the aspects of our response to the issue, we'd be in a much better position. I don't, I don't think it would be easy to implement this, but I think it's the best idea, frankly, that I'd ever heard for how we could deal with the problem going forward.
So why don't we take, why don't we pause and discuss that? Because I circulated the proposal, I think that came from Barbara, that went to ANAC before, and so thoughts, comments, questions from the members?
Why do you think it would be so difficult to put into place?
Would cost money to have a good person do it, so just the fact that we would envision it being a professional paid position, and although, you know, it might not be this person's only job, it wouldn't be, or it might not necessarily be a full-time job, it wouldn't be that you would just take a town employee and say, okay, now you're going to be the airplane advocate, too. So I think it would only be money that's stopping us.
What do you think it would cost?
Money stops a lot of things.
Well, there are solutions to that, and in recognition... And in recognition of the fact that budgets are tight, we had thought that perhaps by obtaining a grant and including the position within the grant, or approaching, you know, a charitable organization that might be willing to envelop purchase of more noise monitors, which the town also needs. The town graciously was able to purchase one, but we need more. So there would be one noise monitor for every runway and then wrapping that up with the position as well. We don't envision this being, you know, a forty-hour-a-week position, but to start, let's walk instead of running, that it would be, twenty hours would be ideal to be someone that is on top of this subject exclusively for the benefit of the town and looking at it as more of a consultant's position than an employee's position.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Wells?
Barbara, does any, do we know, do we know, does any community have anything like this?
Do I know?
Of any community that has a person like this, an employee who does this?
I'll say, I'm not, I'm not aware of that.
Okay.
I think most of the, most of the communities within the Logan area seem to handle it through volunteers and.
Right.
And town, and their town officials, just as we have done.
I think the thought process that the committee has, though, is that Milton is unique to this issue with the number of air traffic patents that fly over the town.
Every day.
Every day. Sometimes more than others. But we really feel that as a committee, we've advanced the cause, but going forward, I think we need someone with a little bit more expertise than ten volunteers can bring to the conversation. And it would be someone that had concentrated efforts where we meet once a month and all good people and all passionate and all have their own area of expertise that they bring to the table. And this would really require the position of a special set of skills, not only in technical expertise, but in organizational multitasking, being able to present, being able to write, and being familiar with the subject for Milton. So very specific in terms of what the requirements would be.
Yeah, it would be, it would be a person who knew, this person would look every day and see, okay, what's happening all around the country in every, every airport, every airport's regions fight against NextGen. They would keep track of all the litigation, all the FAA decisions, plus everything that happened within Massport here at Logan. They would know what all the other towns were doing. They would know all the people at all the towns. They would, this person would go to all the meetings. They would, they would write the first drafts of all the things, all the communications that we have, and they'd comment on everything. There would never be anything that took place within the FAA or Massport that affected Milton that this person wouldn't be on top of and weigh in on. And, you know, that would take a degree of commitment that, you know, nobody else is able to have, unfortunately. I would say it may be that Milton is, Barbara mentioned Milton being unique. We're not as able to pair up with other towns as, as much as some of the other towns. So some of the towns, for example, that are affected by runway thirty-three or runway twenty-two, they're able to work together among the towns more cooperatively than we've been able to, frankly, because our, our issues are somewhat unique and the towns around us are either not organized or are happy to let Milton take the burden.
Mr. Chair, I'd ask, maybe we take this under consideration, maybe let Mr. Denny give some thought to how, maybe come back to us, ask to him if this were feasible way that it could be done, if it's feasible at all. I mean, it's a concept right now, but to make it a reality, we'd have to get over a few hurdles here and see if it.
Ms. Collins?
I think I hear the differences between what you're talking about in recommendation number four, hire a technical consultant to advise on how to reduce the impact of air traffic over Milton versus thirteen, but I wonder if you could just elaborate on that for people who are.
Yeah, the, so the recommendation about the technical consultant, that's, that would really be more of a one-time thing. We, in part because of the MIT study and the things that are being proposed through that, one of the difficulties with being an airplane advocate, we're realizing is that the FAA and Massport are happy to sit back and let the, the people who are burdened come up with the solutions rather than them, rather than, you would think, you would like for us to be able to say, look, we're, we're burdened and you guys are the technical experts, figure out how to solve that for us. But, you know, unfortunately, this happens all around the country. The people who are burdened by the airplane problems have to come up with the solutions and kind of make them work within, within the FAA and, and the regional airport authority structures. So that, item four would be a consultant that would help us with those recommendations. Frankly, if you had an airplane advocate, you might not need that because the airplane advocate would know as much as the consultant ever would, so.
Right, okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Excuse me, thank you.
Questions or questions on this item specifically? And other comments or questions about any of the other recommendations?
Just, actually, just going back to the last one.
Ms. Collins?
So on the airplane advocate, I do think we should ask the town administrator to maybe take a look at it, possibly come back with a proposal. Obviously, any new position in town requires Personnel Board involvement and funding, so I think we should ask the town administrator, who does have the responsibility for the hiring, to take a look at this and take some time, see whether, see what his thoughts are and come back to us on it.
I agree.
So I agree with Richard on that.
Ms. Collins?
Well, to that end, I.
You want to do it? You want to?
When I heard, when I heard about the grant or a charitable institution, I thought that actually would give us a good shot because I'm thinking back to our cultural coordinator that we, that we were looking at that has gone to Personnel Board and, and they've done the work that they needed to do, but there, you know, it hasn't come out because of funding and such issues. And so I'm looking at this and saying, hmm, will that have the same, the same sort of fate? And I guess, I think having some more specifics around it and also a recommended dollar figure would be really helpful.
I think that we'd like to participate in the crafting of the position as it was a recommendation, to know what it is specifically that we'd like to see in that position and the person that would hold it. So in terms of skill sets, in terms of technical expertise, and what we had in mind. And like I said, if there's ability to fund this position and the purchase of noise monitors through a grant or through charitable contribution, that would be even better.
Right, right. And those, that guidance and that, that visioning of the position, you would need that for the grant and, yeah.
That's true. You'd need a budget.
Mr. Wells?
Just, just in, the nonprofit jumped out at me. I just sit here listening to my colleagues and you talk about this, perhaps pilot, sort of our pilot partners, this might be something that one of them might be willing to contribute monies towards to pay. It actually is a public health issue. It does affect every aspect of this community, young and old. It's outside the box, but it's, it's something that we could perhaps craft that would be real that we could wind up being pioneers in because of the two of you.
No, that's a great idea.
No, because of Barbara.
Just a thought, just.
No, it's good, the, other comments, questions? Anything else?
That's it from us.
That was, that was all from us, thanks.
Great, great, thank you. I think we, I think we have, of the things that you mentioned, Mike, we have the meeting scheduled, we're working with the community noise lab, the school board, they are, the school board, the school committee, school committee involvement. Is that something that you want us to do formally? I mean, I think, I think it's a great idea and I think, I think you all should, you all can just go ahead and reach out.
No, whatever you think the proper procedure would be, we'd be glad to follow it. So if you think ANAC is the right committee to reach out to the school committee, we'd be happy to do that.
So why don't I, why don't I send a note, if the, if the board agrees, I'll send a note to the school committee chair and to the ANAC chair to connect them. And then, and then they can, they can use their best judgment on how, how to go forward.
Perfect.
Okay.
And then, and then on item thirteen, do, I'm not quite sure what's happening because we had, you would like to work on the crafting of the position.
I think the chair of ANAC, Andy Schmidt, and another member of the committee, it could be me, we could talk about it at our next meeting, which is next Tuesday, as to how we could go forward, who would want to volunteer to work on that.
And you would keep Mr. Denny?
Get in touch with Mike.
Great.
Okay. I mean, we don't expect this to happen overnight.
Yeah, no, I, I'm not. I just wanted to make sure we connect all the people who are supposed to be connected.
Yeah, some of the good questions that I heard was, does anyone else do this? How much would it cost? Those are, those are fair questions. And, you know, I'm glad, actually, that there's enough interest that we're going to get to those questions. It's great.
I think there's interest, but I, you know, I said this at the ANAC, I think we have to be cautious about the funding because we're, we're working at a $2 million hole for next year. There may be grant funds available for it, there may be charitable, we're still talking about a town employee, so we still have channels that we'd have to go through, still have to be approvals. I think the town administrator has to be a key part of it. So I think there's interest, but cautious interest, or, you know, just because we had other suggestions, commit the cultural person was, was a key one that came in a year ago that we had a lot of enthusiasm for. We weren't able to fund it, and we weren't able to get any grants for it, I don't think. I think there was an effort, but.
No, and we're cognizant of that. And that's why we're looking for creative ways with which to be able to fund the position and not looking necessarily to town funds if there's another way of doing it.
Yeah, my comments mainly for the reporter in the room and for the residents who are watching. You know, it's a good idea, making it a reality may be a little bit more challenging, so just cautious optimism on that front.
Okay.
And then, Mike, you, you mentioned the other communities. I think either Cambridge or Somerville might have had something similar for a short period of time. I'm not aware of anything current, but I think for a short period of time, one of those communities might have had something.
We can check that out.
Okay.
Most of the towns have pretty good websites with regard to this subject, so we can look into that, that's on.
That would be good to know.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, do we need a motion on this? I'm going back, I jumped back up to, where were we? Lost.
I don't know if you need a motion on the town, the townwide update, but if you don't, I'm not sure there's anything else you would.
Yeah, I don't, there's not, yeah, we have, we have.
Okay, item eleven, there's a discussion vote on it, recommend it to.
So I can, I can say on item eleven, reaching out to federally elected officials, we've been trying to schedule quarterly or biannual meetings with either representatives or our federal, federally elected representatives. And to that end, last month, and I think I mentioned this at the ANAC meeting. Ms. Collins, I met with representatives of Senator Markey and Senator Warren, and I would say ninety percent of the time was spent on this issue, primarily two things. One was the National Academy, the consensus bill, trying to get their support for that. And then, and I think Senator Markey, Markey followed up with that. And then also the, the, the noise study that the FAA had done, we, we mentioned that, the fact that there's a draft study that no one can get their hands on. And so we, so we pressed them on that. So certainly, you know, my view is whenever we meet with those representatives, and I think we're going to probably have a meeting with representatives, if not Congressman Lynch, representatives of Congressman Lynch, to me, this is priority one for our federally elected representatives because they have such an impact on this.
And I'm not sure if the committee's aware, but I think there was a video that was circulated within the last week of a hearing that Congressman Lynch participated in.
Yes.
And referenced the town several times.
That's right.
In terms of trying to move forward with community involvement by the FAA.
Right.
So that was great. He must have mentioned Milton at least four times. So we're out there.
Mr. Chair, I'm referring to agenda item eleven.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you meant number eleven.
I didn't want to interrupt.
No, no, sorry about that. Sometimes I go off on a tangent, Richard, and you just can't stop me.
I'm just trying, I'm just trying to get you through this before we have to take out the energies, the energy drinks.
That's right, that's right.
Do we?
And number ten also.
And number ten. So do we need a?
Well, number ten, I think that's a separate item, and number eleven B is a separate item. So we can go back to those after. I wanted to make sure we, we, I don't want to, I didn't want to keep Mike and Barbara here all evening.
No, sorry, I'll wait around till.
And we can talk about that now if you.
Hang on to the things.
Ten is the ESPR.
Yeah.
And then, and then we're going to talk about the committee charge and membership for ANAC.
Yeah.
Not specific members, but structure.
Yeah, okay.
So.
I'm going to wait around and listen, listen in on that.
So we're, so we can take that, yeah, we'll take those now.
Or are we there now?
No, we'll take those, we'll take those next if you, because again, we don't want to keep you here all night.
No, it's fine.
All right, so we'll move, we'll move from item eleven A, why don't we go to item ten, which is the, which is the, let me just get it in front of me. It is the response, our proposed response to the 2017 Environmental Status and Planning Report. We have the opportunity to comment on this, and the town has commented previously on this. We have another opportunity to comment. We, we had thought that the deadline for this was October eleventh, and so we circulated a draft and circulated a draft to ANAC. That deadline has been extended to November eighteenth. So, so the pressure's a little bit off. We have time to get more comments, both from ANAC and from anyone else. I would say our, our next meeting before, our meeting immediately prior to the eighteenth is November sixth, so I would say we need to, this board, this board will need to vote on this letter by November sixth. So that means we have, that'll be the second, the two meetings from now. So, so we can, we can discuss this draft now, but it may be better to collect comments and discuss it either at the next meeting and the subsequent meeting on the sixth or just on the sixth. So, Mr. Wells?
I defer to you two. Whatever you two think, you've done the bulk of the work on this.
Well, I have comments to send to Karis, but I'm guessing the ANAC probably will because they only got the, the committee only got the draft right before the meeting started. So I'm guessing we'll have comments from some of, at least some of the members on the.
The comments from the committee are to be funneled through Andy, who would then forward them to the board.
Okay, great, okay. And then, you know, we can, we can, we can put this up on the website to make sure if anyone else has any comments. We can put the draft up on the, it's a public document, we put the draft up on the website. And if anyone else has any comments, we can certainly consider those as well.
I'd be comfortable with the twenty-third. That would give us two more weeks to, from tonight to source any comments, get them incorporated and be ready to vote. I'd rather vote earlier than, I think it just looks better, just my own personal, than to wait until the last day that we can vote.
Yep, that makes sense.
But again, I defer to you two. If you think we can do that in that timeline, I'm fine. If not, then I'm fine with that as well. But it'd be nice if we could do it before the, the November date.
It might depend on town council's schedule.
Right.
Ms. Collins?
You may have to expedite him, tell him what this forthwith.
Yeah, and I, I have comments to send, too. I guess my question is, though, I know that we're going to be having this town hall, but is it important to have some sort of hearing and not just put it up on the website? I'm very happy that we're putting it up on the website, by the way, but, but do we need to put it, make it in a formal, a formal agenda item to have people come in and, and make comments or?
For this?
Yeah.
That might take a lot of time, though. I mean, if you get inundated and then you have to filter through them all, I, I just.
Just a question.
I think it would be more helpful to put up a link to the actual ESPR itself, even more so than just a draft letter. I'm a little ambivalent on putting a draft letter up on the website because it's, you know, I think there's a lot, it's a rough draft and it's based on the prior, the EDR response from last year, but I think that needs some work and there's a section that needs to be added. So I think it's better to actually put a link. So I think it's better to actually put a link, so if people want to actually go, it's, it's very lengthy, it's a few hundred pages, but if people want to flip through and see the relevant sections, that might be helpful to have a, a link up there. And if people have comments, they can bring them to the attention of, if the ANAC is meeting next week, then that might be a place for people to direct any comments to as well.
Yeah, the agenda has not been established as yet, I'm hoping to have it out by Thursday.
Okay. All right, anything else?
I did hear from COA Director Mary Ann Sullivan, and this room is available November 14th, 7:00 P.M.
All right, so it sounds like we're booked for.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
Yes, thank you. All right, so we will get comments for this, from, for the, for this Environmental Status and Planning Report comment. Item eleven B, committee charge and membership. So, we are in a position where we need to reappoint members of the ANAC, and there's been some discussion about how big the group should be, who should be, what positions should be on the group. For the last year or so, a year and a half, we've had two select board members on the committee. That's something that we've discussed about, you know, there's been some discussion about whether, whether we should continue with that. So why don't we take membership first? And there's, I think there's, fair to say, there's been some discussion about whether we want to make it a smaller group so that it wouldn't be as much of a challenge to, to establish a quorum for meetings, which is, which has been an issue over the last year. So that's the backdrop. Currently, there are, let me see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and I believe there's nine currently.
Nine or ten.
Nine, nine or ten currently. So, so the question is, first question is, how many we want? The one recommendation we have, the proposal that we have from town council is that it be no more than six members appointed by the, the select board. So, questions, comments about membership, Mr. Wells?
Currently, do you, are you a voting member?
We currently are, yes, but that's a separate issue as to whether we should remove the two members of the select board from it, or?
Right.
So we are currently voting members.
Yeah, and, but, but, you know, to that end, I, I, I'm wondering whether the structure you have with the fire building, fire station building committee is better, have a non-voting liaison member rather than voting members. Again, to make it easier to.
So it works well for the fire station building, it has worked well, but I, but I don't know, I'd, I'd be more guided by how you two feel, the other ones that are there.
Yeah.
Want enough, is liaison better than voting, I, I don't.
I think it is, you know, I think it, you know, to, to, you know, this is a separate group, a separate committee. I think for this group, my sense from, from being at the meetings that, whether we need to, you know, what we need to do to establish a quorum, if we had a liaison member to the group attending the meetings, so there's connection between what ANAC is doing and what the select board's doing, my sense is that that, that would be, that would be a better model.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I'm fine with it, you two.
So, so if we did that, and we had, again, this is, the, the suggestion here is six members.
Would it be acceptable for me to say that normally committees are odd numbers?
I was just going to say the same.
So I would say seven or nine, but not six.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We had some talk about five or seven, and I think we were leaning more towards seven than five, but, and I, I prefer an odd number, too, for voting purposes.
I agree, I mean, it just makes sense, I mean, you wind up in a tie, how do you break it? Now the select board members are liaison, can't, I mean, I agree with, I'd say if I was right, seven would be. So do we need to add us, there's only, there's only six names here?
We're not, we're not, we're not appointing tonight, we're just thinking, we're just, we're just determining what the structure should be. So, is it, Ms. Collins?
Oh, no, I, I think those two things make sense, I think it's a lot cleaner, there, there are advisory committee. So I, I think that makes the relationship much clearer if we don't have voting members on there. And I, I, I guess I would be concerned, and hearing from you would be helpful. Five members, do you feel that you'd have enough people doing the work?
No, there's really a tremendous amount of work, and everybody has their own expertise that they bring to the table. So I would think five might be on the short side. I don't know if you agree with that, Mike, or not.
I, I do agree.
Yeah, I mean, there's a tremendous amount of work that goes on behind the scenes, that's intangible, that people probably don't see. That was one of the concerns that Mr. Halloran brought to the table last week. So I think we need to do a better job, maybe being in PR, and promoting what it is that's happening in terms of activity. But, you know, the Chair does a tremendous amount of work, and Mike is here tonight with us and brings a legal aspect to the committee. Other people are, you know, been involved in the airplane discussion for years and were LCAC representatives. So everyone has, you know, a nice background and a special spin on the subject that, you know, makes it a good conversation when we get together. And I think brings something different to the table, which helps the considerations that we need to make when we're doing or making advisements to this board.
You need someone with a, a technical science background who can read studies, and, you know, that's, I'll, I'll say that's neither of us, you know, for example, so.
I was just going to say, who is this?
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, I, I think seven, and if, if you had six, you'd still need, wouldn't you need four for, could you?
Yeah, your quorums are going to come up.
You'd still need four for a quorum, right?
Right.
So, I should be better at my municipal law, but.
So it, so it sounds like the consensus is seven members with a liaison from this board. There was a suggestion about whether we should stagger the terms rather than making them one-year terms.
Yeah, and most of our committees are one-year terms.
I think that's right.
Yeah.
I think that's right.
Hi, Ruth, Katie.
I mean, the ones that are staggered, things like the Conservation Commission, which has statutory standing, and that, that's a little different than an advisory committee, I think.
And, okay, so, so we can revise the charge along those lines, and then there were some other comments, there were some other revisions to the, to the specific bullet points for the committee's charge. So thoughts or questions, comments about what we have?
Let's roll.
I think the revised bullet points make sense because, you know, there's an old reference to the Logan, CAC. This was written several years ago, as well as Massport and the FAA, so we took, the town council's proposing taking that out, which I think makes sense because most of the direct communication there is with the board or with the CAC rep. But it would obviously, so right now, the way the bullet points have been rewarded would set to achieve, this goal of the committee will work in collaboration with the Massport CAC representative to seek solutions. It will minimize or alleviate the hazards of noise, air pollution, and the low elevation of aircraft flying over the town, which is kind of a combination of some of the prior charge. Educate residents about potential health risks of airplane noise and pollution in general, and report its progress to the select board at least twice per year. So it's really condensing some of the duplicative wording of the earlier charge.
And then collect information about the impacts of airplane noise and pollution.
Oh, yes, that's right.
That bullet point as well, on the residents of the town as well. So, so we can go ahead, if, if the board, if the members are comfortable, we can go ahead and vote on the revised charge with the amendment that, that it would be seven members and one-year terms. And we don't need to necessarily, I don't think, put in the, put in this charge that there, there would be a select board liaison. We can do that, we can add that to the charge, I don't think we necessarily need to. But, but if the, if the members are comfortable, we can go ahead and vote on it, or we can wait until next, next meeting?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we amend, amend the membership of the ANAC to seven members, and that we adopt the recommended committee charges outlined by Member Condon. Just now, just to duplicate what I, is there anything else, did I get that right, just by what you read?
Yeah, just the only amendment would be the, the one-year terms.
With the amendments, yeah, with the final thing being the amendments to being each member to serve a one-year term.
And perhaps we, perhaps we do put on the charge with a, with a liaison from the select board. Might as well, might as well do it.
That's a friendly amendment, not my motion.
All right, so then, with those amendments accepted, motion's been made.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion?
I'll just ask, we have Mike and Barbara here, do they have any comments or suggestions?
I have a question about this as I'm, as I'm seeing it. I, I agree with the concept of the committee working in collaboration with the MCAC rep. That begs the question, or maybe that implies that the rep would not be a member of it. And I just, I will just give it for your consideration as to whether it should be specified, whether the, those are separate positions, whether the MCAC rep is a member, is an ex officio member, just attends the meetings and reports at the meetings. Do you?
Is he a member now?
No.
No.
No. The prior MCAC rep was, I think, we described as a ex officio member, not a voting member.
She was a voting member.
She was, okay.
Appointed by us?
Yes.
And that would have handled it appointed by us if you were a voting member.
Yes, she wa, she was, so that was, that was really what the prior MCAC rep wanted to do and had suggested in the first place was to be an ex officio member, so that's where that originated. And I, I think it could work either way. So the big thing is we have to have communication, we want to have the MCAC rep at the meetings as often as possible, if not, make the person a regular member of the committee. Which, I mean, I think, I think communication is your writing issue, so that would be key.
I don't think the membership of the committee is as critical as the understanding of what the communication line should be and what his responsibility is to the committee or the committee to him. But there has to be a stated clarification as to what the role should be in relationship to this board and to our board.
Yeah, I, I think the first bullet point pretty much covers that work in collaboration with the MCAC rep in the committee. So, you know, I think we, they're both, both the committee and the MCAC rep are appointees of the board. Board's going to have an, an important ongoing role in the issue, but we want to have communication, collaboration among everybody. And I liked Mike's comment about the grassroots folks. That's been a huge challenge over the last few years, trying to keep different grassroots groups at different times, everybody rowing in the same direction, but, but to the extent we can do that, too, I think that would be helpful.
So that we don't, so ex officio or not?
You know, I.
I can hear you, I can hear you thinking from over here.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I.
We can come back to that.
Yeah, my view is, my view is, if I, if I had to decide right now, I'd say that, that it's efficient to say that it's going to work in collaboration. That's my view, you know, I, I, you know, I'm, I'm sensitive to the work of the CAC rep and to the work of the ANAC and, and, you know, the, the CAC rep is going to be available to the ANAC, but I don't know that we want to, we don't want to bind, you know, we have a CAC rep who's going, who's going into Boston, you know, at least twice a month or more. And so I think to, I think that's going to be the CAC rep's focus. And to the extent that the CAC rep can come and report to the ANAC and, you know, maybe be there for the first half hour or the first hour of a meeting rather than, you know, rather than requiring.
Whatever enhances the lines of communication is what we're interested in.
Exactly, exactly. So I would, I would, I would, I would leave the way, way it is.
Can I just follow up on that? So it sounds to me like you're asking us to make sure that we, we make those lines of, of communication clear for everyone.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Not, not just have you, rely on you to figure that out.
Thank you.
Okay, so the motion's been made and seconded. Any other, any further discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so we have a charge, we have a.
After Mr. Ferret's, when he comes back.
We have, well, it'll be, it'll be a four-zero vote, yeah. So we have a charge, we have a membership, and then we'll vote on appointments next time. Okay, all right, so I think that covers it.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Thank you.
Ms., Ms. Collins?
The ANAC's been working on this pretty hard for four, five or six years now, maybe, Mike, I'm thinking it's, it's in that timeframe.
Four for me, and it was going well before I ever got to it.
It was going before then, and it was reincarnated once before, and so we've had, we've had members of this board on the committee, off the committee, I like the liaison idea, and the committee's done a lot of good work over the years. So thank you to the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee and for all of your efforts, the entire committee.
I wish it wasn't necessary, but if it is.
It's one of these committees we're hoping is going to happily go out of existence sooner rather than later.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Barbara. All right, moving back to item seven, confirming future meeting dates. The dates that we have are October 23rd, which is two weeks hence, November 6th and November 20th, and then we have the Mass Stop meeting on October 22nd. Any issues with any of those dates?
Nope, you want to add November 14th, since we're here?
November 14th, we'll have the, we'll have the, the airplane town hall. Okay, anything else? All right, moving on, item eight, discussion of the Housing Production Plan Update, Ms. Collins?
Well, as people are aware, we had the forum in which we solicited people's input on strategy after having a great presentation by Karen Sinnerborg, our consultant. Subsequent to that, the Affordable Housing Trustees and the Housing Committee met with Karen again and our town planner, as well as actually the Chair of the Planning Board, and went over the recommendations for strategy from that forum and discussed a variety of other strategies that, that have been used in the past in other communities. And she is now putting together the next draft section, which is the strategy section for us to consider and for us to design a public hearing around. We don't have a date for that yet, but that's the next step.
All right, comments, questions?
Keep plugging away.
All right. Item nine is the fire truck donation, we're going to defer that, I believe, till next time?
Yes, town council's looking at some procurement law, just to ensure that it's done properly. I know it was done preceding my arrival in town government.
Probably five years ago.
Yeah. Items 10 and 11, we've taken care of. Item 12, town meeting articles. We have a number of articles listed, we have text for some of them. And so why don't we take them, some of these, I think we've discussed and we decided to defer, but I don't know that we took a vote on it, we just want to make sure that that was the, the consensus of the members. And so why don't we just take these, without objection, we'll just take these one by one. The first one, the prudent investor rule, I thought that was one that we agreed that we would defer until May, that's what my notes reflected.
I agree, you did.
Okay, all right, so we're going to defer that till May. The small cell policy, the wireless 5G boxes, we don't have any text on that as yet.
Mr. Chair, that's a planning board matter.
Okay, and we don't have anything from that?
I'm not even aware that they're currently working on it.
Right, I mean, we haven't contacted them to have them work on it.
They know about it.
They do know.
The Chair and the Planning Director knew about it, but I don't know what their timeframe is, they're working on a lot of other things. So I don't know whether this is a priority for them or not.
All right, so we'll, we'll take this on the list unless, I'm sorry, we'll take this off the list unless they ask us to put it back on. Civil service age limit, I, I don't know whether we had agreed to defer that one till May or not, I don't, I don't have that in my notes.
I thought the idea, I thought Member Conlon suggested there was a little more investigating to be done by Chief Grant and double back with Chief King to see if, if both public safety arms rub the same opinion with the civil service law.
Mr. Chair.
Mr., Mr. Wells?
I agree with Miss Conlon, I'd just like to put an amendment in there, maybe Mr. Denny could get, there's a, Boston adopted a separate sub to this one, instead of the 32, I think they went with 40. I think for the.